Good evening. Welcome to the Cabarrus County Board of Education Monday, November 16th Business Meeting. We have been in closed session. We are now back in open session. So we've gone through our, a little bit of our agenda, and we will be going into setting our agenda in a second. We have all, our board members are present except for Mr. Harrison, who is with us on the phone. So with that, we need, we have an agenda 4.01. Need a motion and a second to approve the agenda for tonight.
Send one.
Motion by Ms. Furtenbaugh, second by Mr. Schumaker. Any discussion? With that, all in favor of approving our agenda for this evening, please say aye. Aye. Mr. Harrison?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, our agenda is set for this evening. So we'll move right through to our discussions at the closed session. We have some personnel recommendations and some closed session minutes to approve. So we'll go on to the first one, which is our motion to approve the November 16th, 2020 Personnel Recommendations. And I'll need a motion and a second to approve this.
Removed.
Motion by Mr. Harrison, second by Ms. Furtenbaugh. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor of approving our personal recommendations? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed, say no. That motion passes 7-0. So our other item was the minutes from last month. We had one set of closed session minutes from October 12th. You've all had a chance to review that. We'll need a motion and a second to approve those sets of minutes.
And hold them confidential.
And hold them confidential. So we have a motion by Ms. Blackwell.
Second.
Second by Ms. Furtenbaugh to approve the closed session minutes from October 12th and keep them confidential. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed, say no. Okay, our minutes from our closed session have been approved. So we're going to move on to our next section, which is recognitions. And we have a few recognitions this evening, and 6.01 is the Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month, and we have Ms. Glenda Jones with us to tell us who that is.
Thank you. Good evening, Board. Our first one is our Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month. It's my pleasure to announce the Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month. As always, we want to express our gratitude to Mr. Tim Vaughn and Hillbush Ford for their continued sponsors, sponsorship of this wonderful recognition program. Our Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month for November is Beth Giddings. Mrs. Giddings is a kindergarten teacher at Royal Oaks Elementary School. I should have said Royal Oaks School of the Arts now. She was nominated for this award by a parent who wrote, "Mrs. Giddings deserves this recognition because she has been amazing, kind, and joyful. Her organization and experience combined with her positive personality make her a wonderful teacher. She has taken on virtual learning with the same passion as in-person learning and strives to engage the students each and every day. We are grateful to be in her class. Mrs. Giddings, thank you for bringing kindness and joy to your classroom each day and for helping to make families' first experience with school during these unusual times positive. Congratulations on your selection as our November Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month."
Love to hear about our amazing teachers. Thank you so much for that. Recognizations. We have the next one, which is another exciting one, which is the 2021 North Carolina Secondary Principal, Assistant Principal of the Year.
Yes. Congratulations to Concord High School Assistant Principal and CCS Assistant Principal of the Year Chrissy Rotan, who has been named the 2021 North Carolina Secondary Assistant Principal of the Year. Superintendent Chris Lauder, Concord High School Principal Adam Arbok, and other school and district leaders surprised Rotan on November the 6th with the announcement, all socially distanced and wearing a mask. Rotan will represent North Carolina in the National Association of Secondary School Principals, which is NASP if you see that somewhere, which Assistant Principal of the Year Program, which recognizes outstanding middle and high school principals who have demonstrated success in leadership, curriculum, and personalization. The National Assistant Principal of the Year will be named at the NASP National Principals' Conference in July. Congratulations, Mrs. Rotan. Very proud of our Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month, and we're also very proud of Chrissy Rotan because that's indeed an honor to be recognized out of the whole state as the 2020 21 North Carolina Secondary Assistant Principal of the Year.
That really is outstanding. Thank you so much for letting, sharing that with us. I'd love to clap. Exactly. All right, we'll move on to 6.03, which is our monthly Impact Through Education Awards. Then we invite Ms. Ronnie Boone to share those with us. Good evening. Yeah, she's talking.
Tonight, we will recognize Impact Through Education Award recipients at Harrisburg Elementary School and the Performance Learning Center. We're grateful to Equitable, formerly AXA Advisors, for its sponsorship of this recognition program. We also want to say a special word of thanks to our friends at Concord Trophy for printing the plaques each month. And speaking of the plaques, I will make sure that each of tonight's honorees receive their plaques and work with their school principals to get those to them. Now on to tonight's awards. Our first honoree from Harrisburg Elementary School is Bhava Kotapati. Bhava is a fifth grade student at Harrisburg Elementary School. She's a dedicated student with a kind heart. She loves to learn, and it shows. Bhava puts 100% effort into every assignment in class and takes pride in her learning. She is self-motivated and is always trying to better herself academically. Whether she's studying additional material or asking thoughtful questions, Bhava is working hard every single day. She is extremely kind to all of her peers and teachers. She loves her teachers and her friends and feels lucky to be a student at Harrisburg Elementary. She enjoys virtual learning and the opportunity it gives her to explore topics at her own pace. She participates in a study, a math study group with her friends outside of school, and she's also the founder of the Altruismo House, Houses Newspaper, the Altruismo Observer. Bhava's, Bhava's family is from India, and she's very proud of her heritage. She enjoys traveling with her family as well as riding bike with her little brother and helping him with his homework. She's made an impact on education through her work ethic, genuine love for, for learning, and compassion for others. Congratulations, Bhava. Our next honoree from Harrisburg Elementary is Landon Sellers. Landon is also a fifth grade student at Harrisburg Elementary. It is clear that Landon is driven to do well. He is a hard worker who has done a fantastic job keeping up with all assignments, lessons, and small groups throughout remote learning. He excels both inside and outside the classroom. He's active in Cub Scouts, Iwana, and soccer. London is very, Landon, I'm sorry, Landon is very excited to be, be a part of the Isbendy House at Harrisburg Elementary. He oversees the Isbendy Times, which is a student newspaper at the school. He has submitted three additions for the newspaper so far this school year. Landon enjoys being outdoors and especially loves to fish, hunt, and play sports. He's made an impact on education because of his approach to learning, his perseverance, and his positive outlook on school, and we say congratulations to Landon. Our next honoree from Harrisburg Elementary is Meredith Bates. Meredith Bates is the Instructional Technology Facilitator at Harrisburg Elementary School. This is her fifth year at the school. Before joining Harrisburg Elementary, she worked in Kannapolis, and she also worked as a first grade teacher at Weddington Hills Elementary. During her tenure at Harrisburg Elementary, she has served as the robotics coach and manages the HES school news. She's currently the Vice President of the North Carolina Technology and Education Society and will take over as President next year. Mrs. Bates enjoys learning the best ways to utilize technology to support instruction. She's been very busy over the past few months and has seamlessly deployed, deployed Chromebooks to students and has been an important resource for students, staff, and parents as everyone navigates virtual learning. She's provided instructional support, tech support, and professional development to help teachers grow and, to help teachers and students grow. And she's always willing to sit with teachers to make sure they can successfully implement lessons in the virtual world. Mrs. Bates has hosted a Mandarin immersion teacher, and she's also a foster parent to two children from Haiti. She enjoys spending time with family and helping others. She's made an impact on education because of her dedication to supporting the students, staff, and parents at Harrisburg Elementary. Congratulations, Mrs. Bates. And our final honoree from Harrisburg Elementary is Ms. Kim Carmen. Kim Carmen has been a fixture in the front office at Harrisburg Elementary School since 2001. Prior to, to working at Harrisburg Elementary, she was a stay-at-home mom and also worked in data entry and as an office manager. Mrs. Carmen is the first face and voice many students and parents see and hear at the school. She makes sure all the students, teachers, and parents are taken care of on a daily basis. She is extremely detail-oriented and takes great pride in her position and in the school. She is one of the first people staff members come to when they need help, and she always takes the time to help everyone. She loves to spend time with her family, travel to the beach, and hang out with her cat, dog, and new puppy. She's a hard worker with a big heart. Mrs. Carmen has made an impact on education by her dedication to the students, staff, and parents at Harrisburg Elementary. She works diligently to make sure their needs are met and treats everyone with kindness and respect. Congratulations, Mrs. Carmen. Now on to our honorees from the Performance Learning Center. Our first honoree from that school is Xavier Himes. Xavier is entering his third year at the Performance Learning Center. His positive outlook on life is something that people envy. He takes pride in the PLC community and the building itself. He's always there to help without ever being asked. Xavier is a dependable model student whose school leaders look to, to make sure new students feel welcome. He's a gifted conversationalist with a genuine spirit who can quickly connect with both students and adults. He is a valuable member of the gardening club. Last year, Xavier also was selected as a Seekers Scuba Diving Scholarship winner and has completed basic and nitrox scuba diving certifications and is an active volunteer with the Seekers Organization. This year, Xavier is finishing out his coursework through Rowan Cabarrus Community College. However, he never misses a chance to report to the PLC on his assigned days. Xavier is an unforgettable student. The PLC would not be the same without his unique sense of humor. Congratulations on your Impact Through Education Award, Xavier. Our second student honoree from the PLC is Rowan Kelly. Rowan has been a student at the PLC since August 2019. From her very first day, she has treated everyone with genuine kindness and respect. The PLC believes all students have value and worth. Rowan, Rowan exhibits this daily by showing her classmates that they too are accepted and belong to the PLC family. Rowan's energy is tremendous and her eagerness is contagious. Staff selected her to serve as a student ambassador, helping new arrivals feel welcome at the PLC. Rowan assisted in planning and leading activities for College Application Week in October and helped to make it a big success. On clubs day, on club days, she helps with maintaining the school garden and participates in student leadership. When Rowan first arrived at the PLC, she set a goal to complete most of her required high school courses in her junior year. She worked extremely hard and completed nine courses at the PLC plus two at the community, plus two community college classes. She achieved her goal and then some. During the pandemic, Rowan could, could easily work from home since she only has one high school class this semester, but she loves to come to school to be with her friends and interact with staff. Congratulations on your Impact Through Education Award, Rowan. And our final honoree from the Performance Learning Center is Mrs. Rachel Berg. Mrs. Berg joined the PLC last year and made an immediate impact for staff and students. Her positive attitude and tremendous work ethic in helping people was immediately noticed and appreciated by her coworkers and by students. She challenges students to be the best that they can be. Students especially appreciate her willingness to help and that she is always available for their needs. Ken Simeon, Principal at the Cabarrus Virtual Academy, also appreciates Mrs. Berg's willingness to help and shares an example of her influence outside of the school. He said, "Mrs. Berg helped to start the Cabarrus Virtual Academy this year and has been the cornerstone to the success that we have had. Her dedication and willingness to always do what is in the best interest of students is why the Virtual Academy is where it is today. She worked tirelessly to make sure all of our students had what they needed to start the school year while balancing her workload at the PLC. Mrs. Berg is an amazing asset to the Performance Learning Center. She is a role model for students and everyone who has the pleasure of being around her. Congratulations, Mrs. Berg, and thank you for making an impact through education at the Performance Learning Center."
Those are just amazing individuals. Thank you for sharing, sharing them with us. And move on to our 6.04, which is recognition of outgoing board members, and I guess I get the privilege of doing that. Before we get to say goodbye to our board members, we do have an opportunity to recognize them for their service. And I want to take a moment to, I guess we're going to start with Cindy. We have a plaque for you. We have, so this is actually your second stint on the board, but we're going to recognize you for the past four years. Cindy was the board chair from 2018 and 19, but she's actually has 18 years of service to our, to our community here, which is a heck of a lot of institutional knowledge. Cindy's been on the Technology Committee, she's been on the Realignment Committee, she's been also, I guess, representative for the City of Concord, also on the Legal Committee. So she's done a lot just besides the board meetings as well. I know her really for as being the most detailed, I mean, she reads every, every policy, every contract, every agreement that comes before this board. She takes the time to know what's in each, each one and ask good questions. She stands for what she believes in, what she feels is best for students and staff. She's been a big supporter of our teacher supplement increases from 5.81% to almost 10% now, and she's also been an advocate for increasing our technology funding to where we've worked with the county to get about $25 million in the last five years to become a one-to-one. She's going to be missed, and we certainly appreciate your service. Did you want, did you want to say something?
Yeah.
Let's, let's go ahead and do that now. So parting words, advice for us?
I just have to give my parting words, so hopefully my voice won't crack. It has been an honor to represent our students, the community, and our staff on the Board of Education. I took my duties seriously, did lots of homework, and prepared to make the easy and the hard decisions. I always wanted the board and staff to be a team in support of the greater good, and I've always cherished the friendships made during my service. While I won't be on the board after December, I will remain active in support of public schools and will still be asking you all to support the nine school tools drive. Congratulations to the new board members and to the new and continuing board members. I wanted to share a few lessons learned over my 18 years of service, many from wise former board members and from a retired judge. First, respect and promote the integrity of the board. You have been entrusted with this duty. Treat it respectfully through your behavior in and out of formal board meetings. Remember that you have no individual authority, only that of board members working as a body. As Judge Hamby told me 22 years ago, always count to four. Remember that you serve all, and sometimes there will be decisions that put you in conflict between individuals or groups and staff or the law. Listen to all perspectives carefully and uphold the law in your ethics pledge. Remember that our educational and school district experts are right here. Cabarrus County Schools has recognized state leaders in many areas. Listen, ask questions, and share ideas. They want to help you understand and improve the decisions before you. Thank you especially to Dr. Lauder, Brian Schultz, Lynn Reimer, Kelly Klutz, Dr. Crystal Hill, Glenda Jones, John LeGrand, and Brian Shaw. You should never need to surprise the superintendent, staff, or your colleagues with questions. Sorry, I kept pop-ups coming up here. With your questions and comments at a meeting, reference back to promoting the integrity of the board. Attend as many board and committee meetings, hearings, and information sessions as possible. Be the board member that your, your board colleagues and the public can count on with your active participation, and you will continually learn, as I have. And always be prepared. Decisions aren't always easy, but having that insight will guide you. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Okay, next I have Barry Schumaker. So Barry was the Vice Chair from, in 2014 and 2020, and he was the Chair from 2015 through 2017. Barry was also on a number of committees, including the Construction Committee, the Calendar Committee, Beverly Hills Assessment Committee, Kannapolis, and represented the board as a liaison to Kannapolis. He started, when I did, we had only 20, 28,000 students. We now have 33, well, almost 33,000 students, and we're up to over 4,000 employees. He's helped support, he's helped support the, the maintenance budget for the, for the school system, specifically the deferred maintenance, helping increase our, our, our funding in that area to over $50 million. He's also been a champion for our budget, helping, working with the county commissioners to increase our funding from 54 million local a year to 80, over 87 million this past year. He's supported the school choice programs, the arts, IB, STEM, language immersion, our academies, and a champion for CTE. So we have a plaque for you as well, Barry, and it reads, "In recognition and appreciation for your years, your years of service, dedicated service to the Cabarrus County Board of Education and Cabarrus County Schools, November 16th, 2020." And we'll give you the same opportunity. Do you have any parting words or words of advice for us?
Well, it's been a beautiful, actually 10 years because my stint with this, with the Cabarrus County School System started with the Budget Committee established back in 2010. And I learned a lot during that adventure as we started, and we, during those years, we even had to have some rifts, but we, ever since we've been on the board, I've been on the board with, with Rob and with David, we've been able to avoid the rifts after that. We were able to use fun balance and to do creative things, and that's what I'll challenge this board to continue to think as they go into the future. Do your homework. Continue to think about what the future holds. One of the things that we did when we started out was to do a facilities condition assessment to help our maintenance people understand where they are, to help the commissioners understand where they are, to help the public know where we are. It's been about seven years, six years since that study was done, and I believe it's time for this board to consider again another study to help us update where we are on our facilities condition assessments, and I challenge you to do that so that you know where you always are on your, on your facilities and how they're being taken care of. You know, we saw, when I got onto the board, the maintenance department was struggling because we'd been through a recession, we held things flat, we hadn't done any capital investment, and the county commissioners were trying to just see where they were going. But in, since, since we were elected in 2012, we were able to build new schools, we were able to get the county to join us and work with us, and again, those relationships that we had with the county commissioners, they started out a little rough at the beginning, but we have a really good relationship now with the county manager, with the, with the county of, Board of Commissioners. And that, and I think that's a credit to not only the board, but I think it's a real credit to our superintendent and to Ms. Klutz and to all of his cabinet members, and I dare not try to name them because I'll forget someone's name, but they have done so many things to make sure that the county is educated in what we do and, and the mysticism that goes on with, with the school budgets. You know, when we got on this board, Ms. Klutz was getting awards for being one of the top financial advisors or CFOs in, in the state. She still is. She's one of the, now she is sought after. And, you know, she helped bring the state and upgrade its financial system. So we have a lot of wonderful things that have happened in this community as a result of the stewardship from Ms. Klutz and the way she's protected us. She's protected jobs, she's done a lot of things, and I especially put a shout out to her. Dr. Lauder's leadership has assembled a team of really top-notch professionals. Any one of them could do the same job he's doing, but I think that he is, he has done such a wonderful job of bringing them together and making them work and having them, not making them, but getting them to work harmoniously in ways that I don't think has been unparalleled in the Cabarrus County school systems. The integrity of the group is extremely high, and I think this system is characterized, and we leave the four of you with probably as good a situation as you could ever have. Unfortunately, I wish we could have taken the COVID away, and that was the, probably of all the things that have happened to us in, in our years of, of school board, COVID has been the ultimate test of our resilience, of our resolve. We've differed on the way we approach things, you know, we still have to be careful. We are in a balancing act of protecting both our teachers, our children, and their parents, and their jobs, but we have to be very mindful of the fact that we, we're going through a tough season this season, and I challenge you to be careful and consider the cost because we don't want anyone harmed any more than what we have to. And finally, in closing, I would say to each and every one of you, despite our differences in the past, I think that we have done a tremendous job of leading this district and in leading these, leading Dr. Lauder and his team in a way that has been demonstrative of the way we should show the rest of North Carolina that Cabarrus County is. Our district is held in one of the highest esteems in the entire state, and our results have been moving up. You know, we have the stain of COVID on us right now, but we, in 2019, we had outstanding results, and, and we finally began to reach the place where I know we've been working hard to assemble all the tools that supported the teachers and, and our staff. And so those are still in place, and now we've got the virtual learning and those in our toolkits to continue to help us forward. So I challenge you to continue to use those tools, use what you've got, and protect the employees that you have here, keep them engaged, and cherish a superintendent that you have here, homegrown, which was what we had asked Dr. Shepherd to produce us, was a homegrown superintendent, and we got one. And I think Chris is an outstanding individual. He's got a high level of integrity, and I think for a board, the new board coming in, I think you're in great shape to start the future. So thank you very much, and I appreciate all the wonderful things y'all have done and what you will be doing.
Okay, and our last recognition this evening is Mr. David Harrison. So David has been involved since 2012 as well. He's been involved in the construction, approval and construction of over seven, seven schools, school facilities. He's also been on a number of committees, including the Policy Committee, the Legislative Agenda Committee, and he's done some amazing work with the Cabarrus County Education Foundation. He's been our liaison to the city of, County of Harrisburg and Midland. I guess we all know that David is an English major, so I'm appreciative of that. He's very supportive of our staff and our superintendent. He's a, accepts almost every invitation that he has sent his way. He's a, you'll see him at all kinds of school events, at staff recognitions and competitions. And then he has concerns, you can tell he was honestly concerned for all children, including those, especially those with learning disabilities. So we also have a plaque for David, you'll have to come pick it up since he's on the phone, but it says, "David Harrison, Board Member 2012 to 2020, in recognition and appreciation for your years of dedicated service to the Cabarrus County Board of Education and Cabarrus County Schools, November 16th, 2020." So that'll be available for you, David, to pick up. Do you have any parting words or advice for, for us?
Thank you, Chairman Walter. Pardon me, I'm free. Are you hearing me okay?
Yes, we're hearing you fine.
For every bus driver, every cafeteria worker, every EC specialist, every SRO, every administrative office person, all hell, the school treasurers, every teacher assistant, every teacher and certified and non-certified staff member, every electrician and mechanic and facilities, grounds, people that work with us, all of our teachers, all of our principals and assistant principals, all of the central office staff, all 4,000 or more employees of the Cabarrus County School System, thank you. You are excellent, you're marvelous, you're superior, you're superb. You are unparalleled in your skill and your qualifications. I admire every one of you, and many of you taught me many, many, many good lessons, time and again, in my eight years with Cabarrus County Schools. Dr. Louder, you are a stellar leader. I say that with no reservations whatsoever. And Cabarrus County is lucky, lucky, lucky to have the leadership that you and our staff demonstrate and represent. It's been an honor to serve with the Cabarrus County Schools System and all of your staff, and I encourage the current board and the incoming board to recognize the gold that you're setting on with the strong staff that we have, who have nothing but the best interests and desires for the safety and the health and the well-being and the good education of 33,000 students. That's what's on the line here, and I encourage the incoming board to have all that in mind and to work for the betterment of the whole county. Thank you, Mr. Walter.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. That was the end of our recognitions for this evening. We'll move on to Section 7, which is Approval of Minutes. And we had two sets of minutes from last month, was a minutes from October 5th work session and the minutes from the October 12 business meeting. And board members, you've had an opportunity to review those. Are there any changes or corrections? And if not, I would need a motion and a second to approve those minutes. So we have a motion by Ms. Furtinbaugh. You want a second then, Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Second by Mr. Harrison. Any further discussion on our minutes? And if not, oh, in favor of approving our minutes, please say aye. Aye, aye. Anybody opposed, say no. Okay, those minutes have been approved. So we'll move on to our next section, which is Section 8, Board Chair and Superintendent Comments. And I just have a couple. Essentially, it's been a crazy year, so a year ago, we didn't really expect how this COVID would impact us, and I've been very impressed on how everyone has risen to the occasion to really reinvent new ways to educate our students, just the virtual and the blended and all that. So really appreciate the work the staff has done, the teachers have done, our students, the efforts that they've put into this, and our families especially. We'll get through this eventually. But we are getting calls about the rising numbers, so I did take the time, I talked to the Health Department today, and I asked them essentially, are the schools contributing to the rise in the numbers? And they told me they could not attribute the schools to the rise in numbers locally. I asked them if they were recommending any changes to the way we're operating, such as going from Plan B to Plan C, and their response was that there are no recommendations to change what we're doing currently. They were actually waiting for guidance from the state, and so far from everything I've seen from the state, state is still saying, not giving any advice, guidance to change what we're doing. So that's the summary. I just wanted to bring that to your attention, and that's all I had. I'll hand it off to Dr. Louder.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to begin with a few celebrations. Congratulations to Winkler Middle School for successfully completing the authorization process to become an official International Baccalaureate World School. The IB program offers a high-quality continuum of international education, and students will be participating at the middle-years program. Winkler Middle School is now part of a global community of schools committed to developing knowledgeable, caring young people who'll be ready to negotiate their futures successfully and make contributions, resulting in a more harmonious and peaceful world. We also want to congratulate Royal Oak School of the Arts. They received the 2020 Sustainable Business People's Choice Award. Winners were honored for innovative and high-performing buildings. We will have a formal recognition of this with the architect and some of the people that were involved at a future board meeting, but we certainly want to acknowledge that they were recognized for that. Last week, we celebrated National School Psychology Week. Our school psychologists work with students, families, other educators, and in our community to help students thrive. They are experts on mental health, school safety, child development, students with disabilities, multi-tiered systems of support, data analysis, and interpretation of that data. We appreciate the work that they do and are grateful to have such a dedicated group of professionals in Cabarrus County Schools. They and Amy Louder, who leads our psychologists, have really worked to integrate their work into our schools over the last couple of years, and they have a model that a lot of people in the state are very envious of. They've done tremendous work, and they make our schools better, so thank you very much. Today marks the beginning of the fifth week of in-person learning since we've been back in Plan B. I want to thank our students, parents, and the school staff for their cooperation and support for a smooth and safe return to school. We're continuing the safety measures we established for returning to school, which include temperature checks before anyone comes in the building, requiring everyone to wear masks, social distancing, and enhanced cleaning protocols. Again, we appreciate how everyone has participated in that and made our schools as safe as they can be in this kind of crazy environment. We also continue our weekly COVID case reporting. That report is published on Mondays at 5:00 PM and can be found on the district website if you select the COVID-19 tab. Our partners at the Cabarrus Health Alliance remind you that it's important to answer their phone calls so that you can receive information about contact tracing or other health guidance, which they're doing pretty much every day, all day, till about 10 o'clock at night, and then they start in the morning and they work on the weekends. They also remind you to stay diligent in monitoring your children's health, and if you think that they may not be well, then keep them at home. This past Friday, our Human Resources Department hosted a virtual teacher fair. We had about 120 teachers that participated in the event, which was held based on the success of the virtual teacher fair that was in the spring. So again, very, the middle of the year is not the biggest group of our teachers, but certainly very important to go out and recruit. We appreciate everyone that's attended and everything our HR department did to bring new employees to Cabarrus County Schools. Teachers, administrators, and students in grades 6 through 12 are receiving annual training for the Say Something Anonymous Reporting Tool that we have. This tool is part of our district's safety initiative and is provided to us at no cost by Sandy Hook Promise, a national nonprofit organization that works to improve school safety and culture. The program teaches students, teachers, and administrators how to recognize warning signs and signals, especially within social media, of individuals who may be a threat to themselves or others, and say something to a trusted adult or use the anonymous reporting system. You can access the Say Something Reporting Tool through the district website by selecting the Say Something icon on the right side of the page or through the district's safety site at www.cabarrus.k12.nc.us/safety. Our annual holiday e-card contest is back for the 10th consecutive year. All Cabarrus County School students are invited to submit a design to design a holiday greeting that will be used in the district's official holiday communications. The entry deadline is December 4th. Visit the district website for contest rules and entry form. And just to reiterate some of what was said earlier, we want to say thanks to Mr. Schumaker and Ms. Furtinbaugh and Mr. Harrison for their work. Three board members who've actually also, multiple terms on the board, made a huge difference here in our school system for our employees and for our students. So again, we just want to thank you for all of your work, how much you've put into that. You absolutely make a difference in our students' lives and the lives of this district. We're going to miss you on the board, and we look forward to seeing you in the future and also welcoming our new boards in. So again, thank you again for your service. You definitely made a district here a difference for all of us, and we appreciate everything that you did. Next week, we will celebrate Thanksgiving. Enjoy your break, and remember to follow health guidance to keep your family and our family safe and well. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dr. Louder. Lot items this time. We'll move on to Section 9, which is our Guest Speakers section. And each month, we try to allow our public to speak to the board directly. They have to sign up first. I don't think we had anybody sign up this month.
That's correct. We didn't have any.
All right, so we will move on. Section 10. So Section 10 is the Approval of our Consent Agenda. Those are the items that we had discussed yesterday, or last month, last week, sorry. You've had a chance to, if you wanted to review them again, they were out there. If we're still okay with those items, we'd need a motion and a second to approve our consent agenda.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Schumaker, second by Ms. Furtinbaugh. Any further discussion on our consent agenda? If not, let's vote. Oh, in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye. Aye. Anybody opposed? That motion passes, so we have passed our consent agenda, and we're going to move on to our action items. So we have a few of those, and we'll start off with Section 11.01, which is the Policy Revisions for Approval on the First Reading. And these are some of the items that we talked about last week. We went through a training on Title IX the board did last Tuesday, so we've had the opportunity to get that training and the opportunity to review these documents. So we'll now have the opportunity to talk it out if we want to make any changes to those. So do we have either Brian Schultz or Sue Burns with us? Good evening, welcome.
Thank you, and good evening.
The floor is yours.
All right, so we have the policies back on for first read tonight on the action agenda. So you all received some wonderful training last week provided by Rich Schwartz, so it was very good, lots of conversation. So in terms of, I'll just kind of start with the questions that you all had that were provided to you. There were some recommendations made by the legal advisement as well as the policy committee. Were there any questions or wonderings about those specific questions?
I would offer not a question, but a suggestion to this particular group is, the board has to make a decision on the way it's going to adjudicate or deal with sexual harassment cases in this Title IX, is what I understood. I would rather waive that for this meeting and let the next board come in and take care of that because they'll need to decide how, as a group, they want to deal with this, and I don't think it would be proper for us to put something out there and say, "Let's do it this way," and then they have to come back and negotiate and fight over it next time when they come back.
It is a recommendation. There are three, or four of us that'll be there next time.
Yes, but unless the four of you have a recommendation that you're going to offer to them, I was just going to say that, you know, it's not a direction we need to pick tonight. You can continue to think about it in terms, in context with the other three that'll be coming on.
Is it necessary to do it tonight, or do you need that information tonight? I mean, you already have a recommendation, it's already on there.
Yeah, so we have the recommendations. I do think it's certainly acceptable to, you know, pass it on along to the next board, but if there were any questions, such as the preponderance of evidence, the live hearing questions, any of those, those would certainly be worth discussing tonight or giving feedback on.
Ms. Furtinbaugh.
And keep in mind that this is only the first reading, so the new board can be seated, can study before their meeting, and make any recommendations before second read. So it's actually kind of good timing how it flowed.
And they attended the training as well.
Yeah, and if they choose to table it for one more meeting because they need some time to study it, then they have that option that's available to them too. I think that they should go into this with their eyes wide open. There's no reason to rush since August is long gone, so.
Yes, and it's a good time to reiterate, we are following the federal policy.
I just want to make a quick comment. I agree, and I appreciate you recognizing that. I think there was one new board member that participated, but not so much the others, and I think that is a good idea that they be given the opportunity. So I like that it is on for first read and that we have the opportunity to get them in on the second read, but I think that is real important to make them inclusive of it. Thank you.
Did you want to go through the questions?
I'm sorry?
Was there a list of questions?
The ones that were provided and we reviewed at the training.
Go through them to the public.
Sure, so the first one is, what supportive measures will be offered in the complainant and respondent? We did list what supportive measures were, and it was not an exhaustive list, so there was a recommendation in Policy 1725 for that. And then the next question is, what information will be provided to the complainant by the title coordinator? Again, that was in Policy 1725. That included the grievance process as well as the supportive measures, and really the overall process is what would be provided, and that the complainant can be informed of the, you know, any of the outcomes, possible outcomes in the resolution process. And then the next question is, what timeframes will the board set for the grievance process? That's actually referenced in multiple places in Policy 1726. There's about five different reference points for that about the timeframe. And then, what will the displaning actions, sanctions/remedies following a responsibility determination? So that's also referenced in Policy 1726. The recommendations, really, it's a superintendent decision, but it could be up to and including dismissal and anything less than that as well. So, and then, what will the standard of evidence be? So the recommendation was the preponderance of evidence, and again, that's in Policy 1726 as well. And then, will the board provide a live hearing? And so the committee did not recommend a live hearing. Again, that's referenced in Policy 1726, simply by the fact that the process is outlined, and in the process, there is not a live hearing. So, and then the last one is, I mean, there's two more. Who will hear an appeal? And so basically, that's a game time decision, but the board has the option that the full board could hear the appeal or a panel of the board could hear an appeal. And again, that's in Policy 1726. And then the last one, which is also in Policy 1726, is will an informal resolution process be available? The recommendation is yes, an informal process, a resolution process would be available. So those are all the recommendations with the references, and again, we have those noted. Most of those questions are answered in Policy 1726, and I think it's just two that are referenced in 1725, so.
Question.
So I would just suggest regarding the panel versus the full board, follow our existing process for other grievances. Otherwise, it gets very confusing on, does this one have to have a full board or does this have to have a simple majority? You know, what is it, a simple quorum? And also the timing. I think that gets very confusing when we have five, 10, 20 days on this policy and five, 10, you know, 15 on the other policy. So I would just say, keep it simple. If the law allows us for the Title IX things, then keep it as close as you can to the other grievance process.
Yeah, and almost all of the timelines do follow the existing timeframes for the grievance processes.
So the only other question that I have is, when you talk about days in here, did you actually define what a day is in each one of these policies? Is a day a school day or is a day a working day?
Business day.
It's defined in the other grievance policies. Just look there. Because I know we went through that before.
Right, but I just look at this one, it says 10 days. I just want to make sure that you have a definition because in some of our policies, we use school days as the count.
And this one is, which one is this one?
Especially for grievances.
It's calendar. It's calendar, I think, in most of the policies.
This one has business days.
Huh?
This has business days in it, 1710.
Yeah, but they should.
So Sue, we may need to make a note of that, and we'll make sure we're clear and specific on that.
Just be consistent.
Yeah, I think you should have it in each policy, at least a definition of the day so there's never, ever a question of what you intend. That would be the only alteration that I would, not even alteration, but just to make sure that you don't have to go back to something else to find out what a day means.
Yeah, and this is Brian Shaw. I would agree. 1710 would be our current policy, and 1726 would be the new procedure. So we should make sure we get 1726 to have a definition.
All right, thank you.
Either that or incorporate what's in 1710.
1725? I'm sorry, Brian. 1725 mentioned something about days in it too, so.
Maybe, maybe it's, it could either be in 1725 or 1726, but those sort of stand alone and then 1710. alone, and then 1710 and 1720 stand apart.
Yep. Okay, we can go through both of those, and we can update that for the next, the next reading. Thank you.
Further questions on these policies? And again, this is a first, first read, so it's now out there for the public, and for our future board members to take a look at and review, and we'll have our next, we'll talk about it again at the next work session, and then one more time at the, at the next business meeting, so.
Okay, and I just want to thank all of you for attending the training. The training was great, and our new incoming board members were on there as well, so it was great to have them as part of this process early on, so thank you very much.
Yeah, and if you didn't get to do it, you have to do it. It's, it was arduous at best, but thank you, Brian. And I'd like to make a motion that we go ahead and move this, these, this grouping of policies past first reading.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I have a second.
Okay, so a motion by Mr. Schumaker, a second by Ms. Carpenter. All in favor of approving these groups of policies on first read, please say aye. Aye. Anybody opposed, say no. Mr. Harrison, did you vote? Mr. Harrison? He's still on the call?
He's distracted.
I didn't hear his vote.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. All right, so that motion passes 7-0.
I had to think about it.
That's all right. 11.02 is a request for funds from the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners for a new computer lease, and we're going to invite Ms. Kelly Klutz to come talk to us again about that. We did discuss that a little bit last week. We're on 11.02, so, and I got you for 11.02 and 11.03.
Good, thank you. Good evening, Board. Before you, we have the request to request funds from the county and to enter a lease, a four-year lease for student devices. Are there any questions regarding that?
Board members? We didn't talk about it last week, so go ahead, Mr. Schumaker.
So this sets in motion a renewal process every single, every year, so that we have devices being renewed every single year, is that what I'm understanding?
So it adds to our annual lease budget so that we will have more of a lease payment. So this million dollars will take care of, so think of it like you're buying a new car, right? So just like you're going out and buying a new car, and you're going to lease it for four years, or you're going to take a note on it, it's going to take you four years to pay for it. At the end of that four years, we're going to have all those devices, and they're all going to be paid for, we're not going to owe anything. But at that time, that, that car, or that computer, is going to be a little bit old, right? So we're going to want more, newer devices, so we're going to take that million dollars that we're going to free up from our car payment, or our lease payment, and we're going to buy more devices, so that we can stay with current and our four-year cycle. So that's the way it works. Does that make sense?
Well, yeah, I was wondering if we had a layering effect, so that every year, we literally have devices turning over, so that we're never, ever just like in these big blocks of four years. I thought, I thought that's what we had planned to do. I just kind of wanted to get it for the public to understand, but I thought we had this layering effect that's going on over a four-year cycle.
Right, so we already currently have $2.8 million in our lease budget, and that's spread over a number of years. So this will make $3.8 million, and we need about $4.6 million, right? So we need a little bit more, I might have those numbers.
And that's to maintain a one-to-one of current, of current devices?
It's to maintain a one-to-one, and also on a four-year cycle. Currently, a lot of our devices, we're having to hold on to five or six years, because we simply don't have enough money in that four-year reoccurring cycle. But yes, we're building that budget, and we're getting there. We're, you know, 75% there, 75, 80% after this million dollars of, of funds.
So one other question?
She's not, there's no team meeting.
One other question. So Ms. Klutz, when we, when we build new schools, those will go into a, we'll buy, we'll have leases on those, the computers for the new school, so like when we open up the new middle school, then we'll bring enough devices in to support that middle school, and they'll go on a lease, and then they'll be folded into the recurring leases after the, those, after that school is finished. I mean, after that school's, four years is up for those devices, say like.
Right, that's one of the initiatives we've been successful with the county, is, is working with them for them to understand that our needs continually reoccur. So when we build a new school, the past, you know, 10 schools that we built, there was a capital outlay, and so we'd build a new school, think of the high school. We'd build a high school, and then four, five, six years later, we had no funds to replenish that entire high school, and that left us in a really, a significant bind. But working with the county, and the county manager, and the commissioners, now they have a better understanding of what we need, and we need it on a recurring basis. So that's when we built into lease, so rather than purchasing even for new construction, rather than purchasing those, purchasing those devices, we add that, those dollars into the lease. We did that with Wes Cabarrus, and we did that with the Hickory Ridge Elementary School, so we're well on the way to fill in that hole, we're just not quite there yet.
Well, I'd like to propose a motion, if no one has any other conversations, that we go ahead and approve this, this request to the commissioners.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Schumaker, a second by Ms. Furtinbaugh, and that's to request funds from the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners for new computer leases. Any further discussion on that? If not, let's vote on it. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Harrison?
Aye.
Okay, that motion passes 7-0. And related to that, 11.03, which is a request approval for the new student device lease and related budget amendments from.
Correct, and this was all contingent, the lease was contingent on the request and the county funding those, but the, this budget request was on their consent agenda. So they are currently in their meeting right now, so I think we can feel very well, very good, that they are approving it since it's on their consent agenda.
Good news, okay. All right, we need a motion and a second.
So I'll be glad to make that motion when the thing is on. I'd like to make a motion that we use this million dollars of our fund balance that Ms. Klutz has been so astutely keeping us protected on, to buy these computers and get this lease started.
What's, what, a million, $12.57, is that the correct amount?
Yes.
And I'll second that, I'd like to make a comment.
Yes.
Just from the standpoint of, I feel like this is going to be the first time that we're really going to have a rollover scenario, a viable one. We're still not quite there, as Ms. Klutz said, we still need another $800,000 or so to get fully there, and as the county grows, we'll need more, but this is a huge step. I'll say, in the IT industry, we call them boat anchors, when you have a lot of old computers around classrooms, and, and parents are used to seeing those on tables on the back wall, whatever, that kids can go do individual activities, but they're not really useful for the whole class. So this will get us, by getting the extra devices, get some of the old devices cycled out that were counted in our inventory, but they're not really valuable on a day-to-day basis. So now we'll have many more valuable devices that kids can equally learn on, so I'm excited that the county has agreed to this.
Good points.
You can also, so I just reiterated what we said last week, which is that, you know, in this environment, the, the county was very understanding of knowing what was going to happen. When we explained it, they were very receptive. Again, Ms. Dubois worked on that, Mike Downs has always been great about understanding that, trying to figure out a funding stream, like Mr. Schumaker and Ms. Klutz said. Mr. Harris has jumped in and done great with that, and when Kelly and I presented to the, the county commissioners, they were, they had a couple of questions, but were extremely supportive of that. Commissioner Poole spoke up about the need and why we absolutely needed to do this for the county. Mr. Morris did the same thing, and so we just appreciate how they understand the situation that we're in, and that we're probably, we're not going back from that situation, so a funding stream makes a huge difference for the system. So really, just to reiterate with what Ms. Furtinbaugh said, but also say thanks to them for quickly figuring out how we can make this work in an environment where we've simply had to have it, and they, they made that work, so we really appreciate it.
And it is a partnership, couldn't do without them, so, thank you. So we do have a motion and a second. We've had our discussion, any further discussion before we vote on this? All right, let's vote. All in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. Mr. Harrison? Okay. That motion passes 7-0. Thank you, Ms. Klutz. Larry, apparently Ms. Wagner was trying to get on the line, did she, needed to be approved? Does that, does not show her. Says, what does it say? Says, been waiting here, hearing music in the waiting lobby. Does that, how do we get her to participate in our meetings?
Did she, did that all break down?
Says she was going to hang up and try to call back in. We'll give that a few more moments, if she can call in, it would be good to have her participation.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, there was something, and I guess I forgot when Dr. Lauter was talking, but just something to update from his statistics on the number of students in Plan C, and how we're having, we started at 67, 68% of parents sent their kids back for Plan B.
Emily Wagner?
There we go.
Is now joining.
Welcome, Emily.
And how those numbers, parents are continually taking the kids back to full remote, and that, it is a commitment for the rest of the semester, is that correct? But just from that standpoint, because he was presenting, and like I said, it wasn't really a discussion, but was just reminded that I think that's important, is to acknowledge, so.
But there are, do they know the process?
Yeah, he has some statistics that I think we all got in an email. Can we just, can he just share those real quick?
Yeah, currently, there's about 63% of the students who are coming to school in Plan B, and yes, there are some, you know, they can make the choice to move to see if they choose to do that. So for example, we may have had some people do that, but today, for example, but when we, the last time we ran it, it's about 63% of people that are in Plan B currently.
So if they want to do that, it's a notification to the principal, or how's that?
Yeah, they let the principal know that they're going to switch to C, and then if they make that decision, they have to stay till the end of the semester, but at the end of the semester, if they want to come back in January into B, then they can do that.
And it started out at 67%, right? I know that the number 70 was thrown around a lot, but it was a little bit under there.
Yeah, so that's true. So I think that when we first did the survey, remember, and I've kind of warned you guys sometimes, when you do a survey, it never really comes out exactly what people say in the survey, for a variety of reasons, they may have to change their plans or whatever. Survey came back about 67% of the kids were going to come in B. It was more around 64, 63%. Right now, it's about 63% of the kids that are, that are in B currently coming to school two days a week.
I need to ask a quick question. I know you sent that information to us. What was the information regarding transportation? How many kids elected and?
Yeah, so right now, there's about 3,500 students that are coming each day, so 3,500 students come on Monday, Wednesday, 3,500 different students come on Tuesday, Thursday, and each one of those days, there's about 6,800 seats that are, 3,500 of them are being used, if that makes sense. So just under 50% of, if you average it across the buses, about half of the capacity.
So we are good, in other words?
Yes, absolutely.
More than good. I've, I've heard a little bit of noise that parents have said that they didn't think that we would have transportation, or we were having transportation issues, and I hadn't gotten that from you, so.
No, like you said, if anything, it's under capacity, meaning what we have now is, you know, most of our buses had about 66 kids that could ride when it was full, depending on their age. Now about 22, so about a third of that capacity, and most buses are 50% capacity or so averaged across, right? So you may have one that has 15 kids in it, but you also may have one that only has two kids in it. So when you go across, it's about, they're about, the average is 10 or 11 kids per 22, so plenty of capacity on the bus.
Great, thank you.
All right.
I have one other, one question. How many buses are we actually using? Because we have like 370-some buses, and.
He's pretty much using them all, so what they're trying to do is make those, you know, the bus routes as short as possible, and also as efficient as possible, because when you have two kids on a bus, it's not really efficient. So what he did when we went to B was, we still wanted to be able to feed students that are out in the community, but on Plan C, so he takes X amount of buses that, to still run those routes, to make sure that we don't have people on the bus too long, but also that we're sending 30 buses to the community to still feed. So he's, he's pretty much using the whole fleet.
So those buses are still feeding and still, are you doing hotspots as well, or is that?
The hotspots, we made sure, what we got to the point was, everybody that needed a hotspot had one individually and didn't need the Wi-Fi buses, so the Wi-Fi buses are feeding buses now.
Okay, let's get back on our agenda, which is 11.04, which is the naming of the new middle school. And last week, we narrowed our list of 13, or 15, or whatever, however many there were, down to three, so we've had time for a week. I don't think we've got any public comments on either one of those, but we have three that we've narrowed it down to, which would be Roberta Middle School, Roberta Road Middle School, and Roberta Mill Road, oops, sorry, Roberta, Roberta Mill Middle School, and I'll open it up for discussion.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, since the neighborhood is called Roberta as well, and there's Roberta Road, I'd suggest we just skip with Roberta. Roberta Middle School, because Dr. Lauter noted last week, which was true, as we were always, each of us was saying Roberta Mill Middle School, we were stuttering on the MM, and the, the initials will just be RMS, and that's nice and simple.
Well, I would, can I?
Let's have a discussion.
All right, because I was going to promote, and I know it's, it's a mouthful, but I do have the purpose for requesting the name facility, and I would like to put, just read that for the Roberta Mill Middle School, because the, the, I don't know if y'all all read that, because I was very impressed with that, and if, if y'all would give me time to read that, I would like for y'all to hear that, because that, I would like to put that motion forward. And this is the Roberta Mill Middle School request, and it said, "Roberta is an unincorporated area in southwest Cabarrus County. The new school would be, would not be the first school in this community. At one time, Roberta had a school for ages, for grades one through eight. My grandfather once operated a grocery store slash gas station in the Roberta community. That was the community gathering place until 1971. Roberta once had a small cotton mill, Roberta, in Roberta community. That was, I mean, that, wait a minute, once, Roberta once had a small cotton mill, Roberta Manufacturer Company, that was acquired by Cannon Mills in 1956. The mill continued to operate as Roberta, as Roberta Mill until it was eventually liquidated in 1978. The mill building no longer exists. Roberta also had a baseball team that was associated with the mill. For years, Roberta Road was known as Roberta Mill Road due to the mill. It served as the main road between Concord and Harrisburg. This area is still referred to as Roberta Mill by Charlotte television stations when they report tracking severe weather. Having Roberta Mill included in the name of this school would be a well-deserved recognition of the significance of the textile industry that was for decades providing employment for thousands of Cabarrus residents. Students who, who attend this school, and educators who are assigned to work at this school in, in the future should know about the history of this area and community in which the school is located, and how their, that school got its name. If Roberta Mill Middle School is selected, I would volunteer to do future research, to provide the school with historical background and information on the mill and the. provide the school with historical background and information on the mill, and the area, and the Roberta community." And this, this was, this submission was by Colby, Colby Cochran, and the address somebody had asked the other day is forty-eight fifty, Roberta Road, Concord. But that, he's offered, it gives, and that is one reason, and I think it's got some historical value to it, not just Roberta, it is Roberta, and I could go with either one, but I thought this had some real historical value, and I think I like to have some historical value.
Okay, thank you.
So I'd put it on the table. If I don't get a second, I don't get a second, but I like it.
And I'd also like to share that one of the gentlemen who is working on the dirt movement and surveying is, is a fellow I worked with for many years at EDS, and he let me know that they have found some horseshoes, and he's going to get them to me to turn them over to Dr. Lauter, maybe for some school decoration or something, or, or have the mascot with the mustangs, you know, something like that, so.
So is there a motion out? Did you make the motion, or were we?
I'd make a motion for a Roberta Mills Middle School. And I mean, that's my motion. If I don't get a second, I don't get a second.
Does she get a second?
It, with the Mill on the, I think it was just Roberta Mill, no S.
Yeah, Ver- Mill.
Right, singular, yeah.
I'll second it.
Okay, so we do have a motion and a second. Let's have some further discussion. I particularly like the location, don't want people to be confused, so I like the Roberta Road Middle School more than I like those other ones, but, Ms. Grimsley?
And I'll say, yeah, actually, I was going to say the same thing. I mean, I would be okay with Roberta Mill, I just was a little worried that there's a lot of new people to Cabarrus County, and I'm not sure they would know exactly where that is, or the meaning, and yes, we can educate them, but I like the idea of it being Roberta Road, which actually is the name, you know, of the place it's located. But I could go either way, it's, it's all good.
Mr. Harrison?
I'm certainly delighted to work, Ms. Carpenter's recommend, and Ms. Furtinbaugh's second.
That was, Ms. Blackwell's second, okay. Mr. Shoemaker?
Well, needless to say, the community has got historical value, but if you listen to the beginning of what Ms. Carpenter read, they were talking about the Roberta community. So Roberta is the primary name, we don't want to make it too complex, and I think if we just call it the Roberta's Mill Schools, I mean, I think that would be concise and direct, and it would honor the whole community, being that, you know, unlike some of our cities that already have town councils, Roberta is just a place, and, and it has some historical value to it, and we could still talk about the Mill in, in the, the school, and they might want to call themselves the Spinners, or something like that, so.
Okay. Well, it looks like we have two votes for each, and Ms. Blackwell will be the deciding factor. Which one do you like?
So I, I really love the historical piece of Roberta Mill Middle School. I know it's a mouthful, I can kind of see people start to just refer it to the Mill, and just knowing that that's the middle school, so I, I kind of like that, I mean, it's just kind of a, kind of a slang way to refer to their middle school, I think it's a cool kind of vibe to it, so, I mean, I like Roberta Mill Middle School.
Oh, that sounds like there's a?
Yeah, just a point of reference, though, you know, there is a Mills, the Mills community where C.C. Griffin is, so I think, hopefully, they won't start calling it the Mills, just because I think there would be confusion.
No S, right, the Mill?
Yeah.
All right, well, there is a motion out there, it does appear that there's at least three votes for that, but, so we have a motion, we have a second, a motion by Ms. Carpenter, a second by Ms. Blackwell, to call the new middle school, Roberta Mill Middle School. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
I'm okay.
Oh, it's going to need four, or it's not going to pass, so. We need four. I like the Road better than I like the?
Yeah, I like just Roberta.
All right, so there's two nos. What do you have, yes or no?
How many do we have?
You have three yeses, and two nos at the moment, Mr. Shoemaker and?
So who is okay with Roberta Road Middle School? Are we it?
I think it is typical naming something after the?
Well, I was thinking, you know, that's like Harris Road Middle School, you know exactly where that is, you don't even have to think about it, so that's why I, Ms. Carpenter, what do you think?
I like my Mill. That's why I put it out there.
So it's now up to Mr. Shoemaker? You support her motion, or no, we go with something else?
No.
Okay, so that does not pass. All right, we need another motion?
Sorry, Carolyn.
Yeah, if it's not just Roberta, I'd rather go with Roberta Mill. I, I just like, I think when we looked at all of those, Roberta was the commonality.
So are you, are you changing your vote, are you, are you changing your vote, or no?
Well, I want, I just want to stay with just Roberta.
Well, then, off of the, off of the motion?
If there's not enough votes for that, then I'd rather go Roberta Mill, so.
I got.
Come over to our side, Cindy. Come to our side.
Come to, come to our side.
I don't know, I don't like, I don't like the alliteration, though.
Somebody's, you want to throw out a motion?
A sensitive motion on the floor, that we go with Roberta Road Middle School.
And I'll second that.
Okay.
So there's a motion and a second for that one. So all in favor of that one, please say aye.
Aye. I guess I'll go with it.
So is that yes?
I'll go with Roberta Road.
Okay, so that's four. Ms. Carpenter? No, okay, Mr. Harrison? Roberta Road Middle School?
Aye.
Okay, and Ms. Grimsley?
The [inaudible].
Huh? The vote is, is it Roberta Road Middle School, is the, yes or no?
Yes.
Okay, and then, Ms. Blackwell?
I'll, I'll stick with Carolyn.
Okay. So that would be five to two, in favor of Roberta Road Middle School.
Although, I would encourage Dr. Lauter to turn over that information to whoever's named principal eventually, the historical information.
History is important.
It's on our, it was on the, the information that was submitted to us for naming, and in that gentleman's name and his phone number is on there, but all that stuff that I read was on there, but I thought that was very good information.
Especially for their pictures or anything like that.
And I was just going to add, being on the construction committee, you know, Carolyn, we can use some of that to place at the school as well, some of that information, kind of like they did at Hickory Ridge High School, the beginning of that, that would be, I think that's great.
Thank you, girl.
The history is important, and I think we need to recognize that, so I'm more than happy to do that as well.
Okay, before we end, Ms. Wagner, our teacher liaison, joined our call, I think she missed most of our meeting, but I wanted to give you an opportunity to, to say anything you, that was on your mind for this, this meeting. Ms. Wagner?
Hi there, I'm here. I don't have any, anything specific on my mind to share, if you guys don't have any questions about how things are going in Plan B, but I've worked over the agenda, and I don't have anything additional to add.
Okay, anything for Ms. Wagner, before we? All right, then we'll go to our last six, yes?
I did, Ms. Wagner, you, you opened the door to asking how things are going in Plan B. Let's hear from your perspective, and what you understand, how is synchronous learning working for you?
Um, yeah, so there's a lot of positives, we love having the kids back in the building, there's been great safety protocols, everybody has been working well in the building. As far as instruction, so when you think about, right now, for most people, I would say that, you know, we're live streaming and teaching in person at the same time, so putting out the instruction is not challenging. I think right now, the biggest challenge is making sure that students are engaged in person and online, which has been very, very difficult and challenging to manage it all. The technology piece is hard, but I definitely have loved seeing the students back in person, that has been just a great thing to have them in the building, and have them working in front of me, and being able to give them feedback, and seeing them to respond to that, but there are definitely some challenges, and a lot of weight on the shoulder of teachers right now, doing both, managing the virtual piece, and then managing the instruction in person. To be honest, you always feel like you have one ball up in the air, and one ball dropping, but, you know, we just know that this is the season, and we're constantly taking feedback and refining that, and finding ways that we can continue. I think that our teachers are doing a wonderful job during that live stream block, I think our teachers have been very creative in finding ways to engage students, doing the simultaneously virtual and in-person, but it can be difficult to meet all of those needs right now, and so everybody is really working around the clock to make it happen for the kids, but we definitely love having them back in the building, and I do want to shout out the kids because they followed every expectation, they've worn their mask, and they're just really the, the heroes in all of it, because they've really had those positive attitudes. So it's been okay, it's been good, but there's definitely been some challenges that we're working through, and really just trying to support each other and do what's best for the kids right now.
Thanks for sharing that perspective. Any other questions? Ms. Carpenter?
As, as we, you mentioned it, but my question is, I was wondering, so we are really, before we decide something, to change our status, we're just really waiting to hear from the state? I mean, we are seeing the numbers increasing, but are we just waiting to see what the state does? Are you going to make a recommendation to us, Chris, to see if we change, because we're definitely seeing the numbers increase? Or what, I mean, because we can call an emergency meeting, or something to that, I mean?
Yeah, Mr. Walter mentioned the state, so I'm not, I don't know exactly what that conversation was.
Because, you know, we originally said?
The conversation with the health department, right now, so they were waiting on any guidance from the state before they would change any recommendation.
Because we?
Their, their comments to me was, they have no recommendation to take, to go to C right now.
Because we originally had said, you know, we wanted the kids in at five percent. We're, we're, right now, I looked at the state right now, and if you look at the state, we are at eight-point-three percent in Cabarrus County. To me, that's unacceptable, and so that's why I'm wondering what we, when we're going to say, hey, should we step back now? So when are we going to make that decision, or when are we going to decide? So that's, that's what I'm asking this board. When are we going to say, hey, this isn't good? Because we used to, we said originally, we wanted it to be five, and eight-point-three is a, a long cry from five. So I'm just asking.
Mr. Shoemaker?
Well, Ms. Carpenter, I don't disagree with you that there's, but I think in deference to the new board coming on, there's no need for us to change direction at this point. I think when, when you seat the new board, I think it's up to them, unless all four of you right now are of the mind that you want to change something, there's no need for us to try to hash this out now. But I think, thinking about the future, you probably want to set some type of upper and lower bounds that you're willing to live with, so that you're not hashing it out at the last minute, and then things get, go sideways on you. I mean, maybe the new virus, new vaccines take place, they, they happen, and, and we start getting distribution by early, early spring, that might happen, but I don't, I don't put a lot of hope in it, because, you know, it'll probably be more at-risk people than students and, and the people that are parents. But, so I think the new board has to really make this decision, rather than us doing something tonight, unless you have the four votes that are going to be solid four votes, so you don't keep flip-flopping back and forth, because I don't think we need to do that.
I was asking the question, we're, we're getting the questions from the parents, and I was putting it out there for somebody to say, because I think the parents?
The answer from the health department is, they do not recommend us changing it this time, so.
Well, I, I asked the question, so that's, I put it out there.
And I would just like to recognize that we're getting ready to have Thanksgiving break, you know, that we're getting, going into the holiday season, and the new board is coming on. I truly think that the new board, new board members need to have a say in this, and that's going to happen relatively soon, and they have Thanksgiving break next week, so.
Okay.
I'm thinking right now, probably would not be the best time to entertain that conversation. My opinion.
Ms. Furtinbaugh?
Yeah, and I, I would like to just add that I think when the children went back to school, many families maybe started feeling very comfortable that there wasn't too much happening at school. I happen to work at a local grocery store in my retirement, I'm in there for a lot of hours, two days a week, and the mask usage has significantly declined, to the point where I went to the store manager and said, have you noticed this, or is it just me? He said, no, it has gotten borderline ridiculous, how few people are wearing masks. So that's when our numbers start going up. Our schools have not been the source of a lot of these infections. It's people hanging out with friends, having little parties at their home, having big birthday party, playdate type things. We really need the families especially, to keep focusing on not spreading the infection, and it has said, been said time and time again, that while kids don't often get sick, they are the carriers. So please, folks, it's not that hard to wear a mask. Protect your family, protect the other families you're around, and when you go to the grocery store, protect people like me. So, like I said, it has gotten to the point where whole families are coming in grocery shopping, where it used to be one adult would come in, and that adult would have a mask on, now they're all coming in, nobody wearing masks, so.
And I definitely want to make the statement that we go back to the same conversation we've been having with that. The school system and the campuses are probably one of the safer environments, that with the masking that is mandated, it's not an option, the social distancing, the numbers that we're keeping, they're only there two days a week, they alternate. I still go back to what I've said, we have one of the most safest environments, the way we clean, the chemicals that we're using, yeah, you just validated exactly what I said. Everybody's going out there and being involved in grocery stores, and all the lows, and?
Other things.
The other things, and they're more exposed to those than they'll ever be, probably, in our school system. We are a safe environment, and I just, I, I think the parents, and a lot of the teachers are recognizing that, and feeling much more comfortable, and I think Dr. Lauter would agree with that.
Thank you.
Not to put you on the spot, but.
All right, Mr. Harrison, or Ms. Blackwell, do you have any further comments, or I'd need a motion to adjourn?
No comments.
Okay. So we've come to the end of the meeting, we need a motion to adjourn, a motion and a second to, for adjournment?
Second.
All right, so we have a motion by Mr. Shoemaker, second by Ms. Furtinbaugh. All in favor of adjournment tonight, please say aye. Aye. Anybody opposed?
Aye.
All right, so we will say goodnight to our listening audience, we will see you next, next month with our new board members. Good night.